Okay, after lots of stalling and chit-chat while the computer rebooted, we're now ready to go. It is Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 at 6:00 PM, and this is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting that I'm calling to order. And the first thing we're going to do is all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll ask the City Clerk to call, please.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Ed Ullaberry.
Here.
All City Councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mayor Protem? Thank you very much. Then the next thing on our agenda would be the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So I'll ask, is there anyone here who wants to speak to Council about something that isn't on the agenda? I didn't think so, so I'm going to skip reading that language. But I will say that we always do have this period set aside. So if there's members of the public who want to come, I always use the dog park as an example. It might not be on our agenda, but if you want to come and tell us how you love the dog park or what you think the dog park needs, this is the right way to do that. In addition, you can always email Council with your concerns or questions. So we're also available by phone, and our phone numbers are on the website for the city. Okay, next on our agenda then would be the approval of the minutes. This is City Council consideration of the minutes of our September 19, 2023 regular City Council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the minutes of the September 19, 2023 regular City Council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, please go ahead and vote electronically. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda tonight, item 7 is Resolution 23-19, City Council consideration of a resolution setting November 7th, 2023 as the hearing date for the Osprey addition annexation. And I'll turn this over to our Planner, William Reese, who tells us about how it works when we set a hearing date for an annexation.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'll be somewhat brief since this is not the official hearing for the annexation or the zoning itself. But the resolution is a item that the City Council votes on in order to set an official hearing date for any annexation. That is a state requirement. We are proposing November 7th for that hearing date. One minor change since the work session overview, the Planning Commission zoning hearing date has been changed to October 25th, but that does not impact the overall timeline, and this should be wrapped up by November 14th, assuming you vote to approve this hearing date tonight. As discussed during the work session, this site is 9.53 acres in size and is within the city's urban growth boundary and the city sewer and water service area. The property is entirely bordered by existing city limits. We do plan to take a proposed zoning designation to the Planning Commission that will include both P, Public District, R4, High Density District, as well as R3A, Medium High Density District. The R3A is just the right-of-way being annexed, but the P and R4 would split the property. To reiterate, we are working on a minor subdivision during this process that would be recorded right after that annexation, should it be approved, to avoid any issues with split zoning. This is the zoning exhibit. We do have a meets and bounds description of each zoning district so that the minor subdivision plat can follow these lines exactly. And this is the annexation plat showing the entirety of the property borders' existing city limits. The property is within the residential mixed-density low designation of the future land use map, which calls for residential development, primarily single-family, but also small amounts of attached development like townhomes. The property is also within Growth Area 1, representing the most cost-effective areas for the city to grow, indicating the existence or proximity to infrastructure. And so in summary, the annexation application is in order, and the property meets state and city eligibility for annexation. We recommend approval of Resolution 2023-19 in order to schedule the official hearing date for November 7th. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from Council? Okay, then, would entertain a motion.
Public comment?
Oh, thank you, guys. Is anyone here to public comment on this item? Okay, seen none.
I would move, Madam Mayor, to adopt Resolution 23-19 as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Please vote.
She's going to start having to give you a hard time about that microphone.
I'm not going to say it again. And that passes unanimously. Okay, next up on our agenda is item 8, Resolution 2023-20, and this is Council consideration of a resolution setting November 7 as the hearing date for the Bluff Harbor Lot Addition Annexation. This is probably going to sound a little familiar because it's the same process, different property, but I'll turn it over to our Planner, William Reese.
Thank you again. I'll try to be even briefer this time. We had previously scheduled an annexation hearing known as the Pallante Edition, which did need to be pulled from a recent agenda. We are bringing this back before you. There's no changes to this annexation aside from the applicants, who are the new property owners, and the name of the annexation. The proposed timeline has been shifted to reflect this and matches the timeline for the previous agenda item. The Bluff Harbor Lot Addition is a 0.72 acre proposed annexation, which is located along Juniper Road. It's also within the city's urban growth boundary in the sewer service area, although it's in the Minoken Water Service Area. They are proposing the MHR Manufactured Housing Residential Zoning District in order to match the adjacent properties that are within city limits. The annexation map here shows that the property is eligible for annexation. The property is technically designated as Employment Center on our future land use map, but given the surrounding zoning, we do think that residential zoning is more appropriate here. The property is within Growth Area 1, again representing the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow. And again, this is just a resolution to set a hearing date, which we are proposing for November 7th. We recommend approval of Resolution 2023-20, which will set the official hearing date for November 7th. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? Any public comment on this particular item? Seen none?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2023-20 as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 9, Commercial Kitchen Grant Application. And this is Council consideration of an application for a commercial kitchen grant in the amount of $176,283.46 for Toasty All-Day Eatery at 1341 Mayfly Drive. And I'll turn this over to Deputy City Manager and Morgan Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am happy to be here tonight to present this item to you in Anthony Russo's absence. You heard about this item two weeks ago at the work session. And so if any members of the public are listening and would like to look back and learn more about the restaurant plan or operations, there's lots of information in that meeting. There's also the applicant here tonight, if you have questions, Council, about this item. This is a restaurant, a commercial kitchen grant, and I'd like to just explain generally what those commercial kitchen grants are. It'll apply to the next item as well. The city has, in the past, offered new restaurants a commercial kitchen grant, and this helps some new restaurants who've come to City Council asking for it. This helps expand the number of restaurants in our community. Currently, there are existing restaurants. Commercial kitchens are very expensive to install. And through our DART Board and our City Council, both have been supportive of providing funding to help install new commercial kitchens. This is a good thing for our community, to have more restaurants, for vibrancy in the community and also for the economy. And when we present these to City Council, we show the amount that's being requested to fund the commercial kitchen installation as well as the estimated time that it would take for sales tax revenue to pay a commensurate amount of money back to the city to show that it's a good investment for the city. And over time, after that amount is paid off, then the sales tax continues to come into the city and generate additional revenue. So that's a brief history of why the city has considered some commercial kitchen grants in the past. This one is for Toasty All-Day Eatery. It's located at Mayfly Drive, which is in the Montrose Urban Renewal Authority area, more specifically in the Flex Buildings in the URA. The request is $176,283.46. And I'd like to mention that this funding, if approved, would go to the contractor, not to the applicant, in order to purchase this equipment. And the equipment, though some of it might sound small, like a freezer, actually is very large. So the freezer is a large freezer, for example, that wouldn't be able to be simply removed from the premises. Mr. Russo asked me to clarify that. And I'm here for any questions that you might have, as is the applicant.
Yes, and on the, I think, point out if this restaurant doesn't go, the equipment stays with the building.
That's true, yes. Or if the restaurant doesn't work out, the city could also move the equipment to a different building if the owner of the building didn't want for a restaurant to be there anymore. So that's an option for these commercial kitchen grants.
And that's because we give the money to pay for the commercial kitchen because we want to see a restaurant there. We get feedback from the community that, oh, I wish there were more restaurants. Or the hotel that's going in says, we need there to be more restaurants to put a second hotel at this location. And so one of the things we can do to make that happen, since we are in the business ourselves of opening up restaurants, is to offer incentives to people who are willing to put their money in and take their risk in opening a restaurant that will help them in that regard to make it happen.
Yes.
And I think it's important to highlight that we always look at the return on our investment. It's not like we're just handing out money and writing a check and have no accountability. We do look at it from an ROI standpoint to see that the city is indeed recouping over time the investment that we're making in the particular business. So I just think it's important to reiterate that.
There was a question that was brought up at our work session that I'm still having a little bit of trouble with, is the fact that a lot of the equipment on most of these were benchtop or countertop equipment. And the fact that one of the other councilors, and I don't remember who it was, brought up the fact that how are we guaranteed that that stuff that's countertop is going to stay at the building without it being removed? Is there some way that is written into an agreement or contract that specifically says that somebody is responsible for that? If it disappears, the building owner or the business owner?
Indeed, there will be an agreement between the city and the business owner that lists out the equipment that the funding will purchase and the conditions of this grant, which are as described, that all of the items that have been purchased with the funding are the property of the city essentially and cannot be removed. And Mr. Russo did want me to point out that even things like the heat lamps in this example will be attached, actually, to other equipment. And so, and just like the freezer, it sounds like a freezer could easily walk out, but these are mounted and they're quite large, and we will have them written in the agreement.
One more question is, where do these funds for the restaurant kitchen come from?
In this case, this will come from undesignated general fund balance. So they were not part of the budget. Council does have an availability of general fund balance, and that's how these restaurant, these two restaurant grants, kitchen grants would be.
Thank you.
And I think your explanation was there will be an agreement with us and the operator on who that equipment actually belongs to?
Yes.
I think it's, is it between the city, the tenant, and the landlord? Are they all involved?
I believe that they all sign off on it. I know that in both of these cases, the landlord has been in agreement or in communication with us through this process. We've done one before where the landlord didn't sign off, but it was assumed that, or understood that the items were the tenants. But then between the tenant and the city, it was clarified that the city owned them. So we make sure to try and make it clear to everyone involved the status of this equipment.
Perfect.
One thing I would like to also clarify is that if there is an existing commercial kitchen and an existing restaurant that has equipment that is non-compliant with health code or with public safety, that they are welcome to come and approach us about this grant as well. Because we want to make sure that all of our restaurants are operating in a safe and healthy environment.
Does this include the nonprofits?
No, unfortunately it does not because they're not commercial kitchens.
Some of them do.
I do, just to go back to my point a moment ago, just to reiterate, I know this is in the record, but I think, again, should be highlighted that the ask is, what, $176,000 thereabouts? And the projected taxes collected based on five-year revenue projections are $222,526. So I think that's important to highlight.
Any additional comments or questions from Council? Either for our Deputy City Manager, or again, she did say that the applicant is here. I think at work session, we had a chance to hear from the applicant, and that is all available on the video from the work session.
One question, I might have fire insurance. Are they, I'm assuming they're required to have some kind of fire insurance?
They would not be required by the city's agreement, but I do believe in order to operate that they would have fire insurance. But would you like the applicant to provide more information?
Well, I can tell you from my background as a professional chef that all restaurants are required to have fire suppression systems and fire insurance in order to operate at all.
It's code.
It's code.
Are you looking out? Your question is because you want to look out for the equipment that we buy. You want to make sure it doesn't just go up in smoke, literally? Is that, okay? Okay, do you feel like you got your question answered?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any public comment on this item? Seen none, would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve a commercial kitchen grant in the amount of $176,283.46 for Toasty All-Day Eatery as presented.
Second.
Please go ahead and vote electronically. And that motion passes unanimously. So next up is item 10, which is a second commercial kitchen grant. And this is Council consideration of an application for a commercial kitchen grant in the amount of $1,007,697 for Eatery North at 614 North First Street. And again, Deputy City Manager, Morgan Taylor.
Hello again. This is another commercial kitchen grant. So the general information that I just shared about the reason why the city and City Council has contemplated commercial kitchen grants previously still stands. And to Councilmember Reed's point, I'll note that the information in the packet does reflect the projected three-year revenue for this business. And we heard from this applicant two weeks ago at work session as well, and they shared that they're providing a three-year revenue projection that's conservative at $85,467. And so they anticipate certainly within five years that they would produce sales tax equal or above the total requested. We're recommending that $107,697 be awarded to this applicant. You'll see that they've requested slightly more than that, but there were two items that we recommended the city not pay for. Those are highlighted in yellow in your packet. And the applicant is here as well, if you have additional questions. This building is located at Park and North First. It is a vacant, I'll just note this, it's a vacant building currently. So it's not being used as anything. So this grant would serve to activate that space in addition to providing a new commercial kitchen and therefore a restaurant to the community.
I'm particularly excited when we can activate a space that is otherwise empty and not being used and not making any revenue for the city.
And the applicant shared more information, again, two weeks ago at the work session about the vision for the space and what they've done in the past with other restaurants and other restaurant in Ridgeway.
Any questions from Council on this one?
I would point out that the items that were, excuse me, that the items were removed were exactly what we were talking about, about the benchtop items that are too easily transportable. And that's one of the reasons why they're exempted from this.
Yeah, I appreciate that Council was able to provide that feedback.
Yeah, I have a little bit of concern. I realize this is a B1 area, and we do not have to notify the neighbors because there's no change in the zoning. But I am concerned about parking. Yes, there is a parking lot a half a block or a little better away. But it's been my experience, most people are not overly aggressive in parking and having to walk back. I do have a concern about whether or not that parking could be an issue. That particular area is basically residential, except for the two buildings on the corner. And in looking at those areas, the street is pretty much where the residents have to park. There is little or no parking in any of the alleys on either side of that street. And that parking issue does concern me.
Can I try and take your concern and frame it into a question for our planning department? And that is, what would be the requirements of a restaurant like this going in in regards to parking?
It's more specific to the zone districts. And so this is a downtown zone district that doesn't have any parking requirements. If it were in a kind of outlying commercial zone district, it would have specific requirements. But in this case, it does not. So public parking essentially accommodates for the onsite parking that would typically be required.
Okay.
And since there was no zoning change, there was no requirement to notify the people up and down that street. But I still think that sometime in the future, that could be a problem for us.
We could perhaps give friendly advice to the operator to introduce themselves to their neighbors and start things off on a good foot. I think that would be nothing more than friendly advice from us to them.
Isn't, I'm trying to picture this, but isn't the municipal parking lot, public parking, just right there at Park and North First? So it's kind of catty-cornered from this, right?
I think it's half a block away.
Is it half?
Right. And it's not like this has been a vacant lot. This has been a commercial building probably as long as people have owned their home that is adjacent to it. Perhaps it would be different if you were living next to an adjacent lot, and the next thing you knew.
Commercial.
Yeah, shouldn't come as a surprise to any of the folks living in the neighborhood that there's a commercial building right there. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was a little concerned about the electrical installations. $18,000 for stuff like the stove, is that electric or is that gas? The flat top, is that electric or is that gas? It just seems that you've got three refrigerators and an ice maker. It just seems like if the $18,000 could wire the whole building, then is that the purpose or is it really what's necessary for the equipment?
Based on the electric bill to put a fan in my bathroom, I'm not surprised. But in all seriousness, I think we'll let the applicant come forward, maybe, and just maybe describe the scope of what that $18,000 covers. And if you would please introduce yourselves to us with your name and your business.
Yes, so my name is Katie Graves, and we have a business currently in Ridgeway called Eatery 66. It's a hard business. Madam Mayor, I would suggest keeping your job. It's a tough business. We work really hard, and we're really passionate about what we do. I would say, to answer your question about the electrical, I think it kind of goes back to what we're dealing with as far as the building is concerned. This is, it's going to be a slight can of worms for us to kind of get this kitchen up and running. This isn't in a new building. So some of the components of putting this kitchen in from scratch, from nothing, is going to be a little bit more expensive, I would say, than a job that's already set up properly. So we're definitely up for the challenge, and I think it could be a really cool little hub, make this town kind of funky. I don't know. I do also agree with the parking situation. For me, I really would love for people to park in the parking lot and walk. I want to keep that area a walking district, and I think we're trying to keep downtown a walking. So I would request, you know, we have certain amounts of square footage we can have for signage. Can we have different parking things on different corners? You know, billboard to get people to do that, so that would be my thought. I think it's really important. I do like that we're in. We're also family people. The restaurant will probably close at 8:00. We're quiet. We're not going to stay out late. It's not going to be a party thing, but it's going to be a fun gathering spot, if you can see it. And we tend to take on challenging things. Our place in Ridgeway was kind of fallen down, too, and we brought it back to life, and it has really good energy in it. So anyways, that's my spiel. More specific questions now?
I have one, Katie. We have a lot of information in the kitchen, in your kitchen grant application. So much so that I'm scrolling and scrolling and scrolling. But my guess is that this amount for the electrical is based on a bid you got from an electrician and not just your guess at what it's going to be, that it's based on...
Personal? No, no, this is all from a contractor.
Yeah, so...
Right, none of this is me.
Exactly.
I'm just here to be, I'm like many people in one.
No, I guess just to try and answer Mr. Ullaberry's question of he was surprised at that amount. That amount isn't, you didn't make that amount up. It was given to you by a contractor on what the installation and the electrical is going to be.
Correct. All of the quote was. And all of the equipment comes from a direct website that we got all the proper things. So that was me, the estimate and all that. But you also, I gave you the whole shopping cart of what it would cost.
Oh, yeah.
I'm quite thorough.
I don't know how many pages this kitchen grant application is, but it is very extensive with a lot of good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
From my perspective, both as a professional chef and as a former general contractor, in order to make a commercial kitchen viable, the wiring has to be up to code. And these older buildings, there's a good possibility that that breaker box is older than some of our staff members. And you can't, you can't put new wires in an old box. So it's going to be one of those where they're going to have to upgrade the entire wiring, even just for the refrigerators, even if they didn't have stoves in there.
What hours are you looking at being open?
What we do now, we go from 11:30 to 2:00, and then we close from 2:00 to 5:00, and then we go from 5:00 to 8:00. And I think we could maybe go till 9:00, you know, but 8:30, I don't know. Not late.
Any additional questions from Council, either for our staff or for the applicant about the kitchen grant?
Mayor Bynum, may I note one thing I'm sorry I forgot to clarify? But again, with this commercial kitchen grant, the contractors would be paid, not the applicant. And so in the event something costs less, then we would pay the actual cost of that. And just wanted to make sure that I said that for this application as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Katie. Is there any additional public comment for this?
I have two quick things. My first question is, when we were talking about that, it may be it's somewhere. But after we pay back the money and the sales tax, does then that equipment become ours?
I'm not sure how we have the agreement written out.
If you buy the building, right?
If we're the owner of the building?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding, is that it...
That's my understanding. It stays with the building unless you're the owner of the building.
Yes, and I'm sorry that Bill and Anthony are not here to clarify... Yes, and I'm sorry that Bill and Anthony and Anthony are not here to clarify that, but.
It just popped into my head.
Yeah. My understanding is that the city continues to own it.
Yeah, you don't get to then take it to Delta.
Yep, and so if you decide to move, let's say you expand.
So we just sell the building as is, is what you would like, basically?
We invest this money to ensure we have a restaurant there for the long term.
So, got it.
You, you cease operating, you move to Delta, that equipment stays in Montrose.
Love it.
It's really treated.
That's great.
Not exactly, but you could, you could look at it as if, as if.
I'm not moving fryers, by the way. Those things are giant. The thing that he crossed off is not you can run out the back door either. You need lots of humans. And then one more thing, I was really on the fence whether or not I was supposed to even do this at this time, but quickly by the help of my friend Colleen, she's suggesting that it was kind of back and forth. We were really rushed in, in getting this to you because the, Sterling would really like to move this process along, we would like to move this process along. So I missed a couple things, which would have been the utilities, like our plumbing and our sewer, didn't get on that and I didn't scan it quick, I scanned it too quickly. And our contractor was in Florida dealing with his, so anyways, he gave me the quote and it's a big number and it, I was just wondering if I could offer at this time to adjust anything.
No.
Okay.
You can talk to Anthony about that, but generally the kitchen grant program is really specific to this kind of equipment and not anything additional to support it. So I think you should stop at a probable yes.
That's no problem. I just had to ask. I had to ask. She, she told me to ask, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I understand.
Any other public comments? Okay. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Counsel, I consider a motion.
I move to approve the commercial kitchen grant in the amount of $107,697 for Eatery North as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Passes unanimously. We have two new eateries going into town. You do not need the word eatery in order to apply for kitchen grant. Okay, moving on. We only have a few things left on our meeting, so you're welcome to stay. Also, we don't consider it that rude if you, you get up and you, and you leave because your item has been addressed, but we just have staff reports and council comments and that doesn't usually take very long. So with that, staff reports, any staff? Yeah, I'm seeing some nodding. Who's got an update or a report for us?
I'll, I'll take it first here. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to provide a quick update on Halloween festivities coming up. So tis the season, although it's early October, it's going to move pretty quickly. So really the first big event that's more or less city-sponsored, really in partnership with a number of folks, is the farmer's market. This will take place the Saturday before Halloween, so that'll be Saturday, October 28th. And this is really a collaboration between farmer's market, DART, Chamber of Commerce, amongst several, several other partners. There'll be a costume contest, there'll be pumpkin painting activities, so I'll bring my little one to that, we'll see how he does. And then just a number of games and activities. So it should be a great time. That'll be from 9:00 to 1:00 again on October 28th. As far as Halloween day goes, there will be downtown trick-or-treating. This is supposed to take place from about 2:00 to 6:00 PM, so certainly spread the word. Michelle Wingfield, our DART coordinator, has some window clings for businesses. So if, and she's been really throwing the word out on that, but if anybody listening to this has a business that wants a cling, happy to provide it to them. That should be another fun event. And Michelle's also working on just a forum that outlines more of the private events and we're happy to help with marketing and things like that. But a lot of moving pieces, should be exciting time.
What, what do you mean by private events? I mean, like when you say, like.
I, I should say more business, business-related events in terms of, you know, DART support, the development revitalization team, kind of helping provide support in terms of getting the word out for business.
Okay, so a business is having their own holiday kind of event and we're helping get the word out, but it's their event and not sponsored by the city? Is that what you mean by?
Correct.
Thanks for that, that update on Halloween.
You're welcome.
Chief Hall.
Madam Mayor and City Council, first I want to say I've always wanted the opportunity to be our Public Works Manager, Jim Shide, and I finally have that today.
We can see way too much of your chin for that.
True, very true. I just wanted to update all of you. October 2nd, both the Public Works Department and the Police Department did a very large transient camp cleanup, really throughout the city, mostly to include Cerise Park and we removed truckloads of debris. And so I know that's been a concern of our citizens in the past. We were thanked repeatedly while we were conducting these operations and these are things that both Jim and I have both spoken, spoken about and we plan on coordinating multiple cleanups in 2024. It's not something I think, just as a city, that we can just rely on maybe two or three a year anymore. And that's definitely something I know that our citizens have also voiced concern about. So moving forward, there'll be more details about that plan, but both our Police Department and our Public Works Department worked very hard just this October 2nd to, to get those areas cleaned up and I think it was a pretty good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Murphy, you usually have an update on what streets closed and what streets about to open.
Yeah. South 10th is scheduled to pave tomorrow. That's the one by Pomona out there. They got all the concrete work done, remember at the Abrams intersection there, we were doing those drainage improvements. Not sure if they're going to be able to squeeze that patch in or not. If not, they'll come back and probably hit it when they do 6700. 6700 is scheduled to pave next week. It's quite a bit of big pave, probably take four or five days. And then the caveat there is, you know, the, the intersection at Miami and 6700 will be reopened, but the main line, they still have to do all the sidewalk work and work behind the, behind the roadway. So they're getting the paving done while we can with the weather and then concrete, we can go a little deeper into the season. So I expect that to be open sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
So it'll look like the road is finished, but it won't be open? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yep, yep, it'll remain closed. The intersections will be opened, reopened, but.
Okay.
And that should round out the big ones.
When I talked to you about this, that there are some of the sidewalk repairs up by the 6700 and Sunnyside.
Correct.
That the reason, and if you could explain the reason why those are kind of not being done as, quite as quickly?
Oh, yeah, so the, the, I don't know if you just, if you've driven through there, we were waiting on some cable relocations to get the power lines out of the intersection at 6700 and Sunnyside. Now that those are done, once the paving is underway, the crews can fall back. They couldn't finish the storm drain piping because there was a power pole right in the middle of it. Now that that's done, they can now put in that storm drain pipe and get the, get the sidewalk put back together on the southeastern quad corner of Sunnyside 6700. Yeah, it's been a priority, just plain couldn't get through the, get through the power pole. And we're at the mercy of the utility, in this case, the communication companies. They just had a lot of work and they have to do their cutovers in certain sequence and overnight and all these kind of things that with noticing take time. But yeah, thankfully they got through it all and overhead power is now underground.
It was a very exciting drive past. Yeah, very exciting to drive past that. I drove by while they're pulling them out, three or four times while they're pulling them out, and I was like cheering every time.
It's crazy how much more open it makes it feel, yeah.
Any other staff updates? Okay, council updates. I've got one. Okay, I'm going to go. Breaking news. Today, we, Montrose was host to the Boys' Foreay State Golf Championship and our very own Noah Richmond finished in first. So he won the individual title in Foreay Boys Golf for the state of Colorado and that's super exciting because Noah has grown up playing golf here in Montrose. He is an employee of the city, working at the city golf course and, and grew up playing on our city golf course and is now, can call himself a state championship, state champion. We're super proud of him and apparently he shot an amazing, the first nine holes, his score was amazing over at Bridges. So hats off to him and his coach, Tom Young. They have done a tremendous job and we're really proud of them.
And he currently holds a number of the course records at Black Canyon Golf Course.
I bet so.
Pretty amazing. Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that we had the Region 10 Executive Committee meeting and it was a really good meeting and a lot of things moving forward on broadband. And as things progress on those broadband issues, I'll keep the council informed. There is a small increase in our normal fee, but I've already spoken to Mr. Bell about that and he's incorporating that into our budget.
And you say fee, that's the city's fee to Region 10, not something?
Yes, our participation allocation.
Okay, not, okay. Anything else from council? Okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, we're adjourned.